Well, speed and order for these rights and fled.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic through which it stands, one nation, none of your own, here in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Trump, please.
Jerry Behringer. Paul Funi.
President.
Today, Joe Lattie.
President.
Robert Laraway.
Senator.
Rand Bibi. Carol Shannon here.
Nate Trance.
Here. We have full contact.
I haven't written this number in a long time.
About three months, four months. Okay, agenda's before us, any corrections, additions? Any objections? Okay, we'll prove the agenda without objection. Consent agenda? Anything to be taken out and discussed? Anything they have questions on? Seeing none, Carol entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda? Somebody?
I'll, I'll do it. Oh, Joe's got it. All right.
What they?
I can be second.
And you are second? Dan in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say no? Motion carries. For reports and presentations, I don't have much, except that I think, I've been thinking about this for a little while. We're going to make, over the course of the next meeting or two or three, some pretty important decisions for the future of the village. Financial and, and otherwise. So, um, I, I hope we're up for the task. Because these are going to have far reaching effects later on. As we get through the regular business, we'll get to the new business and that'll become clear. Okay? So that's it for me. Mr. Manager.
Good evening. You have a report in your packet in writing. Kind of the finer points here. Uh, we still have not received the nine one one calls for service for two thousand and twenty-three. I communicated to Sheriff, uh, last week. Um, they are still working through the implementation of the new CAD computer system at Central Dispatch. So he has added this to their biweekly update meetings they have at the vendor in the hopes that it would get pushed up the chain a little bit further in terms of having some uh, results because this data that he is importantly looking at now as well in terms of, you know, where services might be cut, where there's going to be an impact if they're going to look at a public safety miller, that kind of stuff. Uh, the planning commission will be holding two public hearings at its meeting on June the eleventh. The first is for a proposed special land use. It is a garage across the street at ten thirty-nine and ten forty Essex Drive. Uh, ten thirty-nine is a waterfront home, wants to build a thirty by thirty-two single story accessory structure across the street from his house. Pretty simple, straightforward. Uh, the second one is to receive, um, public comment questions. Uh, proposed change to the zoning ordinance text, which would treat group daycare homes as a special land use in the LR one and LR two districts. Um, there's more information about that in the planning commission minutes. Um, but, uh, essentially we have two, uh, family daycares operating in the village right now. Both of them have waiting lists. Um, Isabelle County in general is what is known as a childcare desert due to the lack of available childcare options. Been speaking with Mike Skinesny, the licensing agent for the state based here in Mount Pleasant. Um, so you know, there's a tremendous shortage particularly of infant and toddler care. Um, so, uh, this would be a change that would allow our family daycares to go from six to up to twelve potentially. Uh, this would be consistent with changes made in the ordinance with respective home occupations. And also would be consistent with, um, the zoning changes that they've worked with Mount Pleasant, I believe, Union Township to get passed for, for group daycares as well. So, um, that would be a public hearing at the eleventh. Assuming the planning commission made a recommendation, um, that it would still come before you in terms of having it introduced and then a hearing and a special land use process. Um, so let's say the ordinance does get adopted, those two operators still have to come back in, go through the SLU process, which allows us to notify everyone within three hundred feet of the location. Um, one of the buffers we included in the group daycare one was you have to be five hundred feet from another group daycare. Um, so we, we've, I think, made good changes to the text that hopefully would not have any negative impact. Um, just the LR one, LR two districts, um, LR three, LR four not impacted, um, LR five already allows group daycare, so. Uh, clubhouse drive resurfacing project, that is going to be, uh, done the week of Labor Day. Uh, so they will be coming in, they make mill before Labor Day, but the bulk of the project is going to be that Tuesday through Saturday, I think of that week. Um, that's important because I am gone the Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of the following, like I've made that abundantly clear to Central Asphalt that they have to be done before I leave, so. Um, in your packet, you have the coverages for our property and liability insurance renewal. Uh, policy one of about a hundred and fifty bucks from last year. Um, all told, we pay nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars before our dividend for five million in coverage is what our liability threshold is set at right now. Uh, you also have in there the, um, coverages on the buildings that are included in the policy. Uh, so we insure three structures, here's GPW in the salt barn. We don't know what our, uh, dividend kickback's going to be this year. It's going to be more than last year. Um, and the way that works is a combination of how long you've been in program and what your loss history is. So we have a zero loss history, so a perfect score there. So every year our multiplier just continues. So last year we had, it's over fifteen hundred comeback, um, from that. Uh, our ref said he would expect it to be close to two thousand this year was what he was anticipating. So, uh, the net cost for our insurance is about eight grand for property and liability. Um, as you know, we did receive a forty-five thousand dollar grant from MISHDA to do a target market housing analysis as part of our master plan update. On this through Land Use USA, they are going to be, um, uh, having a formal proposal for you to act on at your meeting next month. Uh, there were some conferences she was attending and, uh, so she couldn't get to this meeting. One item of business that I would like your blessing on or feedback if you think it's a bad idea. Trying to come up with an adequate response to the animal control issues that we have seen in the last few meetings. Um, right now we do animal control through code enforcement and that limits our ability to do certain things. The animal control position, if it was done through, uh, um, the certification process through the Michigan Department of Agriculture, I believe, would allow us to have the same authority as the county's ACO position. Uh, what I would like your blessing is to contact our, uh, legal department and ask them to research that and get us back uh, information on what it would take if we wanted to essentially take on an animal control position internally here as opposed to being dependent on the counties. Um, not only to better respond to our residents, but also in the event that that position is no longer funded at the county.
Part of the issue is that that person won't come out and help you capture someone anyway.
Correct.
So if you can't capture the dog and find somewhere to put it, there's no help. Would that change here?
Those would be things that the council would need to determine if you wanted to go down that road or not. Um, housing and transporting animals is not something that terribly excites me for a lot of reasons. Um, but it would allow us at least the ability to respond in a different manner than we do with a civil infraction process where, you know, we, we need photographs and neighbors and photo and that kind of stuff. Um, it allows us to leave to be more proactive at the very least.
You're talking about adding the position to.
Either adding a position or reconfiguring what we're doing in code enforcement.
Do you have a thought you want?
I have a lot of options to think about. And one of the issues is going to be, you know, to do the position as it's done through Michigan Department of Agriculture, you have to have a hundred hours of continuing it to, to meet the state's training. So, how are we going to do that? And have there be stability in positions? Is it going to be someone that we're going to have in a part-time role do, or is it going to be someone you add to a full-time positions already, you know, enforcement, effective as part of someone's job here? Not to name many names. We have two, two people here that, you know, in the office, so. Um.
Do we have the money to do that without bumping our, you know, tax dollars up?
Yes.
Yeah, it's real.
Really?
Yeah.
And the complaints that, that have come in and how many have dealt with an actual damage or threat to a person or property or just, or are they all pretty much just nuisance?
Um, nuisance is by far the most common. Um, but we do have, um, last year I can think of two reds off my head. We haven't hit any this year. Um, that involved a, a dog attack scenario, but we, I know we had two last year that are right before, before in my mind without doing any further research. I mean, um, it definitely is something that happens.
It's one of those things.
Any objections to me reaching out about?
No, I think, I'm sorry. Yeah, we left you hanging there.
A little bit.
Yeah.
No.
Um, it's already hot in here, so.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea to at least check it out, figure out how much we need to.
Yeah. And.
That might be the way you mean, Tim, right?
You're on it.
We, it's a royal we.
We then. I'm here and drinking hot coffee.
Yeah, I could agree with looking into it, but not going farther right now.
Well, no, looking into it will give us more details to see whether it's beneficial to get that further yet, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So directed.
So, uh, another item, um, that, uh, you will not be receiving from the county for your six point six one meals will be them handling your summer tax bills. Uh, they sent out through their equalization director on May the sixth, a very vague email about potential changes and, you know, restructuring that could happen at equalization and, you know, that's fine and dandy, but if we use their printer, tax bills have to be prepared by June fourteenth. Um, none of the townships have done this before, so they are hosting one day training on June the sixth. So hopefully people will be able to take on the task of preparing their tax roll, calculating the millages, and then having that PDF exported to their printer shop in mail out. Um, the county.
whose printer?
KCI is one of the county as always.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I'll be honest, I'm going to look into seeing what the cost would be if we use our regular print shop Doug Neff. Um, even if it's slightly more, I would rather have tax dollars stay in Mount Pleasant and then go to a print shop in Grand Rapids. That's my view of the world. Um, nevertheless, uh, the county board of commissioners, um, discussed this at length in their five o'clock work session today. Um, they should be formally acting on the proposal tonight at their seven o'clock meeting, but, um, this is being prompted by the retirement of Judy Niznak from the equalization department. And this is going to result in the county increasing their professional services contract with, uh, PCI is the company, uh, Preston Community Service, PCS, I'm sorry. Um, to basically have all of equalization done offsite, out of town through contracted employees. I think this is a not really bad idea. Um, the county, I think, just realized through multiple emails that the townships are the ones who are responsible for collecting their six point six one mills and remitting it to them in a timely manner. And if bills can't be sent out on time, who's going to have the cash flow problem? It's going to be the county. Um, this is a change that quite frankly, in my opinion, is due to a lack of planning on the part of the county. This is not a surprise. Judy was retiring. They had zero contingency plans in place. And then they send out an email five weeks before a deadline to expect sixteen townships to suddenly take on a task that they've never done before is just.
And it's a huge task.
It's a huge task.
Yes.
You know? Um, things they didn't even know internally at equalization, like their, three of the townships already use the treasurer's office. They don't know how, um, you know, for us, because we moved to the cloud, most of the other ones are on the dot net, which is the own internal server. Is there going to be any issues there with exporting data between our two townships and us to do this? So, um, I sent five emails over the last two weeks to the contracted director of equalization and did not get a response. Uh, he did acknowledge that tonight in the five o'clock meeting that he certainly owes me a call or email. Um, I believe Jeff and Jessica both attended the meeting and fill you in a little bit more on the situation if you would like to know more about this lovely development from friends of the county.
You're first, Jeff.
Actually, I mean, I did make the public comment in the beginning of the meeting, making sure that I wanted them to go into detail. Uh, Chris Embry by far did go into multiple questions. Um, to Mr. Preston when he was up there. Unfortunately, Pete was sitting in front of me, speaking away from me. I had a really tired time hearing him, so I would have to defer to Jessica with things that he said. I know he did bring up like a development more than once in his conversation, but my impression by what I saw before we left is that I believe at seven o'clock they're going to go ahead and do the addendum to his thing. I think it's because of a time frame.
Well, it's the, the normal turn it was presented from administration.
Right.
It was, this is what we're going to do and you're going to have to live with it and if things go sideways, so be it.
One of my questions originally was when did Judy originally put in her retirement application facility for first? So, you know, that only gives her two months because she's done here on May thirty-first. So again, who directly blame, I don't know, but my guess right now Pete's going to take care of the summer summer taxes and then multiple commissioners did say that that they want to be able to make sure that open communications is happening before. That was part of my big thing. Mr. Preston was there. I knew we were there, but I said in the public comments that there's a severe lack of communication between the two and I'm pretty sure he heard it because he talked about it. So, but I'll defer to her or anything else he would say if you have any.
It wasn't a very positive, uh, meeting. He said what they wanted to hear.
Who is he now?
Mr. Preston.
Okay.
Um, he never really gave an actual answer. He used windows and, you know, side remarks, if you will. He didn't say yes or no. He never gave a direct answer. He did say that he wouldn't leave the county high and dry. He wouldn't leave the townships high and dry, but he never gave gave any. He never told us how he was not going to do it, just that he wasn't gonna. Um, okay. He didn't say what they were taking on, other than they were going to take on those two county positions. But in his contracts, if you look at the one where Judy was employed to where Judy, which Mrs. Niznak, Judy is her first name, where she's not employed, those two contracts are essentially the same contract. Um, not only that, but the equalization director is actually somebody named Scott Cunningham. And as far as we know, he's not part of Preston um, services. So, and they didn't address that in the meeting um, as to who their actual equalization directors would to be in the contract. It just says as appointed. So I have some, you know, for our organization, I don't think there's going to be a problem, but this is something that we definitely.
Assuming we can get the data.
Assuming, yeah, the data part is huge. It is. Um, when Jeff and I left the meeting, uh, Mr. Preston did speak with Jeff. Um,
Thank you, partner.
And prior to knowing who I was, made it abundantly clear that there is an assessor who he does not want to work with. Unfortunately, that assessor is the assessor for both of our townships.
And very well liked.
And very well liked and very good at her job. And I believe that, um, you know, maybe some of this animosity is that this assessor was an equalization director for many years. And she is the same level of, as a assessor as Mr. Preston. Um, and so she has, she has knowledge and questions that she's asking that he doesn't want to. Um, so their, their solution to the database tonight was they are going to take the county's database and dump it into all the assessors database and figure it out from there. None of the assessors want this to happen because the assessor's role should be separate from the county's role. The assessor role is what the state goes off of more so than anything else. If anything, and this is something that Mrs. Niznak had proposed, which was not brought up in tonight's meeting. Uh, the assessors should dump their databases into the county, then they should do what they want and then take the couple of columns back out and put it back in the assessors um, database. That would be better because then the assessor roles themselves would stay true to the assessor because when the assessor signs on the dotted line, it's, you know, it's, it's, they're the ones that are going to suffer any consequences from doing that if they've done anything wrong. Currently, Mr. Preston's company, it doesn't appear that if anything goes wrong with any of the townships or the county, he's on the line for anything because Mr. Cunningham is a contracted service through him, so he's his own separate entity and he now has no employees at the county building. And the reason he said in the meeting that he does not want to take on this endeavor of printing the tax bills is because of the liability reason. And it is, if you want to do your own research, an issue that he's had in the past. So he knows firsthand.
So, what it means to us is we have to get the information from Boom, Boomfield Insurance.
Insurance.
And then we can do it. And you guys aren't sure you're going to get it.
And from a Sherman township perspective, we want to take over and do our own taxes.
But I mean, are you going to get the information that you need to do this?
I think right now the first immediate, first immediate problem they're taking care of is getting summer taxes done somehow. And I think they're going to do it to Pete. So after that, I'm hoping with Chris's help and stuff like that, there'll be more and some other stuff.
I watched me. Pete is, they are not doing some taxes with Pete.
Be there at all.
They're not going to do his tax bills with Pete.
Oh, okay.
That was in the meeting.
So what are they going to do?
We're going to have a one day training. Um, and, and then they're going to record it so that we can go back. And then he will maybe provide a list of contacts in his company of the two gals who have done tax bills for a very long time that we can call them and ask. Cloud base is just, um, out of luck because he will not be going to the cloud base and uh, any assessors that have township, townships or villages with cloud base probably is going to have to again, get all of their uh, townships on cloud base.
Which is what we are.
And Isabella Township is also going to be cloud based. So, uh, he made it, he made cloud base be, uh, seem very negative. Uh, when in fact, it probably would help his company out tremendously if he went to cloud base, but he, uh, flat out refused in the meeting, so. Um.
So how are we going to get the information? No one knows.
Right now, I am in the process of working with our assessor to get the database as close to the county as we can and then go from there. However, when we say we're getting this database, we're going to get this database and put it in there. We are going to be in charge of putting our own millage in. We're going to be in charge of making sure our millage is correct. Um, all of our special assessments are going to be on it. Nothing's going to go to the county and then come back to us. It's all going to be in-house. And that's where the other townships and municipalities that do this are going to run into problems because there's a lot of townships out there that have multiple different assessments and, um, tax levies that are different, you know, per class. And they are going to.
School districts like in Rowland Township, yeah.
There's so many things that are going to go into this and those treasurers are going to be responsible if they forget something on a tax bill. Because it's, you know, there's not another person looking over anything anymore. Before Judy would prepare, prepare the tax bills, she would send it to us. We would look it over, make sure that all of our stuff that we levy is on there. We'd give her the okay, then she would print it. That's not going to happen anymore. So it's up to us, but it also goes for the county. You know, they don't end up getting the right millage for the county. The county is going to be out that. And, and the list you're saying, let's see if I have this right. There's, uh, somewhere it was said, they're just going to dump, like send all, all the information to all the townships, then you've got to go. No. Find your own? Nope. Okay. No. But equalization has a database that is almost exactly the same as the assessor. And they essentially do the same thing. It's their checks and balances. Got it. What they're saying is they want to take, for instance, let's just say Sherman Township. They're going to take the county's Sherman Township database and dump it into the assessor's Sherman Township database and then just figure it out from there. And then the county doesn't have to do it. And then the county doesn't have to do anything. But it could severely mess up the assessor database. And then you won't know, you know, what came from the county, what was the assessors, why certain things were done. Right now, like I said, we're going through parcel by parcel in Sherman Township currently and Broomfield Township. Looking for anything, any, uh, you know, anything that's not that's inaccurate. So. Yeah, discrepancy. Thank you. And we just have to highlight it. Um, there's a hundred and seventy-seven pages for Sherman Township that I'm currently working on. And our assessor, I believe, has, uh, eleven townships under her. Maybe thirteen.
It's up there.
Um, so she is, she is, you know, probably has the most townships in Isabella County. The other.
Broomfield too?
It's in, Broomfield is another, uh, fifty semi pages. Um.
It's going to be good with that.
Yes, but I'm helping with both and I took over the, the Broomfield portion of Lake Isabella. Just because, you know, I know the names and the area better and what's transpired in, in our tribes. Um, the other thing that they didn't even talk about was going up for bids. Going up for bids. There are multiple companies out there that do this. Um, it was brought to my attention shortly before the meeting that there's actually another company currently that's doing Mason County, which is very similar to Isabella County. Yeah. Um, who's offering all the services that we get now plus some for less than what, um, PCS is, is wanting in their contract. They are not only extending the contract through October first, they're extending it out to, I believe, twenty twenty-seven.
What?
With this guy?
Twenty twenty-nine. With the current person? Yep. Uh, he's been, he's been with them for ten years, he said, as of today. And.
It was a Margaret McAvoy bringing it.
They did not, they did not entertain anything about going up the bids. They just kept going back to they're doing a zero budget or a zero based budget. Um, but I believe in doing so, it would be.
So what do we have to do to protect ourselves?
Yeah, no kidding.
Pay your taxes.
The, the most important thing for us is having the data.
Yes.
You know, once, if we have the data, we can do it. Like, that's, that's not the issue. Um, so we won't have to pay anybody. Well, we're going to have to pay to print and mail and do all that.
Right, but I mean, we're not giving anybody back to the county.
No.
No. It, it's.
I mean, he charges to do this, right?
Oh, yeah, wow. He, he charges to not do it because it's not doing that.
That's what I mean. So we don't, we're not part of that. Good grief.
I did ask Nicole too on that contract to make sure that they had a, a way to get out of the contract that they want to. She told me yes, but I would rather have a actual copy of the contract or at least, you know, Chris to look into and say, yes, there's a way out of that contract.
It's not mine.
Is it? Okay.
I don't want to worry about that. So. Yeah, I got a copy of my debt.
Bottom debt's in there. I didn't have worries.
Yeah, but then you run into the problem of transporting data back from Pete's company to whoever replaces it or bring it back in-house.
Yeah.
And I don't believe that would be a very seamless experience at this point in time.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's what, um, you know, is going to be the forefront of our attention in the near future and.
So gosh, you guys, what? It'll cost you probably two, three days solid work.
Oh, no.
No?
Oh, no.
No, it usually takes over a year to do that.
Yeah.
No, I mean, uh, oh, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
No, because after I go through the hundred and seventy-seven pages, looking for all the discrepancies that we then have to, um, research each and every one to see which entity is correct. And then we have to change it in the system.
Yeah. I've told her it's fine if she works on Sherman and Broomfield with Denise. Even outside of the village, like we, we have a relationship with, with the townships. You know, let's use our resources to make sure that at least Sherman and Broomfield and Lake Isabella, you know, aren't left high and dry in this process, you know, and whoever you send the, the bills to be printed to, so be it. You know, like I've said, I would, I would just assume that Doug Neff's going to give us competitive price. Go talk to Mount Pleasant just because it'll stay in Mount Pleasant, you know? But this is, the, the perspective that the county has taken in this whole process has been so utterly disappointing that they have circled their wagons around their dollars and cents and have lost sight of the services they provide to the community and the services they provide to the other local units of government.
They're not a service oriented.
No, they are not. And as a voter of Isabella County, why should I go up for a new a six point six one mill that right now gives me road patrols in my tax bills if I'm not getting that with the renewal?
Probably supposed to get animal control too.
Yeah.
Six, but we don't.
Yeah.
Right.
We got to pay the police extra to come out here.
Right.
And they're going to cut that anyway.
Yeah. That's what I mean. We got to.
Just save the taxes for two years and not pay them.
Do the best we can, but we have and where we are. That's what we gotta do.
Yeah, wow. It's a little bit terrifying to see all these things that are not have not been handled appropriately. And there's no plan to change to do it right.
This is what makes Tim and Jessica invaluable.
Oh, no kidding.
But otherwise, we'd be sitting here going, huh?
But in in credit to both of our townships right now that have a quality assessor. But we have, we have not always had a quality assessor from one or both at the same time. Denise is fantastic to work with though.
Very professional.
Very professional, very thorough, like. Denise is is fantastic at what she does. And, you know, I'm confident that we will be able to get this done. Through however you choose to do it. You know. Okay, last but not least, uh. We're gonna mow four properties in the coming days. Unless there are rampant objections.
There's not a fourth one up there.
Well, I I don't have the photo of the fourth one, but. Uh, two thousand and three Seabury is a foreclosure. Ten thousand, ten thirty six Cordova and uh thousand three Madrid are vacant due to uh the previous occupant being deceased. And a thousand Velato. Uh, the guys moved out of the area and said, just mow it cuz I don't wanna deal with finding so many moat.
The one thousand and three Madrid, I noticed a a different car there today. Huh, they're making some changes in that.
That would be nice.
And I don't know, but another car there.
Oh, yeah, both.
Hopefully he'll cut it. All right. Anything else for Jim? Okay, Sherman Township.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Our meeting actually got suspended because of the storm last night. Um, so we, under the sudden dirty got back about you could see it, so but just to hit some of the quick things. Um, signage updates, uh, we are actually looking to put up a nice beautiful metal carved out. Sign on the front of the Sherman Township hall. Uh, right now, there's one on the south side that you can't even see anymore, haven't been able to see for years, so. Uh, we do have a new sign out by the road that was paid for by Arfa money. We're also gonna use Arfa money to put this nice sign up on the front. That should be up and running here in the next month or so. Um, if you haven't heard, they did do some smoke testing in Wademan. Trying to help figure out where issues and problems were with the sewer system and the the drains. And they had three particular buildings, they had smoke that showed up in there, meaning that there's probably no. Field or sewer tank in there, so it couldn't rouse up that came out, so we don't have the actual final information yet. We should get that by the month, but. I was sort of surprised, but taking those motives, that way maybe we can get some of that stuff fixed and work with the state where we don't get forced into a sewer system there. Fingers crossed, but I still think we're well. Um, cemetery updates, we're just continuing to working on our cemeteries. Um, trying to get them up to shape and get documented for everything, so we know where all the pots are at and that kind of stuff too. So we'll continue working on that this year. Um, we're looking to put a permanent tree, Christmas tree in Sherman Township Park. So that they can have the lights and all the rest of that up on it every year. Right now Vanderbilt said that they are going to donate a twelve or fifteen foot. Tree that we can actually plant, so we haven't decided exactly where to plant it yet, but that'll be happening here in the next month or so. To at least figure out where we want it and then get it planted sometime or another, so. Oh, finally, after three and a half years of me asking for it, we are finally getting a credit card policy established to have Sherman Township using their credit card. First thing that I was bugging Denise about three, three and a half years ago, though, looks like it may include before my term is done here in November, which is nice. Um. I think the only other thing that we had talked about was um. Uh, updating security stuff. We're gonna put some additional cameras up on Sherman Township Hall and on the library. Again, using Arfa money to pay for that kind of stuff, so most of it just for liability reasons, somebody followed in parking lot or something like that, we've got it. Recorded for that reason, so. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, sorry, one of the things, so um. Chief Livermore was at the meeting, the second part of the meeting. And um Tom had printed out some maps. Apparently, there are four solar farm projects happening in Isabella County. Two of the first two, one is twelve hundred acres, the other sixteen hundred acres. Um, Dave Livermore is the road commissioner, they've taken some concerns on that they're estimating around thirty thousand truck deliveries. Of all the solar panel parks and all the rest of that stuff, and there's no way the roads where they wanna put this stuff are in that kind of shape to handle that, so. They're looking to try to get these companies that's steering us to pay prepaid to get these roads in shape that can handle all the trucks. You wanna know where this project is at? I have one of the maps right here, I can show you after meeting.
Sixteen hundred.
Are they can, well, they must be contiguous, huh? They're they're with.
I'm sorry?
All the, all the acreages together?
And then there's the one, at least one small one. I'd say small cuz it's small compared to the other stuff on the map here. But I'm only aware of the two major projects, which are the twelve hundred and sixteen hundred acres. Um, I could try to find out how, what the sizes will be on the projects are.
What township?
And apparently they're doing even more than that down in Grasset County.
Oh, I think Coles got the big one, right?
Yeah, there you go.
They're both in Coles counties.
Co- Township. Yeah, if you get on the freeway ramp in Shepherd, it's that field to the northeast.
I was told by the stinky cow farm. To the west.
That one's in Grasset, that's. That's for sale.
Those are already panning up there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. The poll report? Got nothing, okay. Public hearing, agenda item six one. Twenty twenty four one, light code amendments. Get it, Mr. Woods?
Your first public hearing tonight is on a proposed amendment to the village with light code that would address um. Logging and timber cutting operations. Um. This is currently the scene on Buffalo Pass. Uh, we received four complaints since the last meeting from neighbors who uh certainly would like the area cleaned up and. Return to a more natural looking aesthetic as opposed to what they have been left with after. The property owner went in and harvested trees for economic purposes.
My, when I went by, I was very shocked for one thing, but the other is, I hadn't thought about it until just recently. My perspective or the residential perspective that it affects the value of their property. So it's something is a concern to all of us, I think.
Oh, yeah.
It's across street from my house, it affects the value of my home. Yeah, yes, true.
Tim, and I might be asking the wrong question, but is this a police action or is this?
Police action ordinance.
It is a police action, so under the police action, that means that they can go after the person that. Right now, and at one time you had said you didn't, you wanted to.
I know, I changed my mind after I thought about it. Yeah, thank you for that. That's why I said that from a perspective of a homeowner, you know, I I.
You hadn't been by it yet.
Yeah, that's true. That is a true statement, so yeah.
The only problem I have with it, and I I wouldn't like it uh right up the front, I looked at it, I didn't like it, it was my yard, okay? But again, when we do the police action, the problem we have is. Somebody did it perfectly legal. And now we can go after him and say it's illegal. And and we have other. Things like that on the books, I'm just saying. You do something illegal and then all of a sudden it's no longer legal.
But the doing wasn't illegal, it's the leaving that's the concern.
Right. But it wasn't illegal to leave it that way.
Right, right. I understand that, yes.
You have a, I have a problem there.
Right.
You.
That's my point.
Put it in. And and I'm not saying I'm totally against it, I'm just saying that that's one of the, we had to make it perfectly clear, especially to the new people. That this is. And we can go after.
Yep.
Under under this way.
Well, if we pass that, we have to. Like, if we pass it, we have to, we have to enforce it.
Right, right, true.
This one and move forward in the future because we'll get a way to set up here. And if we do pass it, we have to go after the guy who at the time wasn't breaking any ordinances.
But we did, I'm trying to understand that the ordinance was there previous, but it was repealed.
Correct, which which I was saying, but when he, when he did this, he wasn't breaking or violating any ordinances because. At that time, and still currently, there isn't any ordinance in place. Right, so if we, if we, we do agree to recent, you know, or put this back in the books. You know, um, with the being a police action, we have to go after that.
You gotta think about this too. We go after it. How much is it gonna cost us to go after it? It isn't just, we go in and say, okay, gotta do it, and they're gonna clean it up. It's. We're probably gonna have to get our attorney involved, who probably has to go or report action. And they'll, you know, they'll go to the judge and say, you know. How can you do this? You didn't have an order. I mean, you had an order, you figured, your counsel figured that they didn't need it, you took it out. I did this. And it can be costly. That's all I'm saying, and I'm just guarding that it's gonna be costly and we're getting into spending more and more money. Through everything we're doing now, I mean.
To me, it represents something a little bit, a little bit more than just an eyesore. To me, it represents a burn hazard.
I, when you say burn hazard, they do that out in the country all the time and they leave it and they don't worry about burning and stuff like that.
Yeah, but we're not in the country.
Yeah, but I mean.
No, I mean, that's the thing that I would be concerned with, bowels, those four houses right there.
I don't see it as a burn problem at all. I I see it as very ugly. I wouldn't want it next to me, you know. I'm not fighting you guys and that I'm agreeing with, I'm just. Making my comments, so everybody knows what we're getting into.
You're referring to like the DNR's clear cutting of areas and leaving it for here, haven't they?
Well, DNR, but also other people, I mean, I've had property cleared cutted and left, you know. For analysis, stuff like.
I I I can see the the logic behind it. But I just can't see something that. We're gonna pass an ordinance against something the state goes ahead and does.
Say that again, what?
Well, the state is, they're cuts areas all the time, they just leave the wood there. And the and the brush and for here and lot and wildlife.
It's a lot of upset.
That has its own community, I don't think that applies.
I I, again, I'm not against it.
This went through last time. Right, that's still last is concerned because what what legal action can the the property owner take? I mean, legally, I don't think there's a lot to do, but he can raise quite the stake. Insinuating that we as a council are going after him because that wasn't in the book. There are two other places right now that this has happened. Okay, the village.
Yes. Oh, really?
Yes. Yep. As far as the fire hazard, um, while between your place and my place, there's that easement that goes out there. Um, that's a much worse fire hazard than this is. I mean, cuz everybody's been dumping leaves and what.
A lot of more than people.
This is our domain, it may get less hazardous.
Yeah. I'd also. Say like that, when we brought it up, there was one point. And now there's three more of them this month.
Yeah.
I mean. It may not have, it certainly wasn't like. Somebody, you know, there's one person and then there's everyone else around, so and what's in the best interest?
If there's something that are written, that I'm for.
Well, you know, it uh, it is a bit reactive, but. If we put it in and sport, we can go after them.
We, actually, if you put it in, we really should have to go after this guy right then because you can't make it in the.
Now, in in one of those instances, the person is cleaning it though.
Right, you know, right, the one person did it properly.
Another one went into the association park and cut down a bunch of trees and that's a whole other realm of issues there that's trying to be sorted through.
And then sold the trees.
And then sold them, yeah, yeah.
Which I would like back.
Without written permission.
Dead against us. But that, he's dead against doing any, he or she. This part right here.
Is everybody communication with the property owner? Not on that, on his other blended properties, yes.
He's got more than one.
So the probability is, if we had the ordinance still. Uh, we would have still, we would still have to enact the rules in order to get this particular individual to follow through anyway.
Right, yeah.
Again, I'm not saying.
And the issue that we had with the previous language was that it it was, it was too broad, in my opinion, that it. A tree came down, it it put that onus on you. This is specific to, you know, act of God nature, that's one thing. If you go in and deliberately fell and cut trees, you know, this is a different issue than than a storm coming through, you know. And as far as being able to enforce it, you know, absolutely, we would be able to go back and. You know, reasonably notify, give them a reasonable period of time, you know. Clean it up, yeah, you know, um.
There are people that would go to that guy and said, we'll clean it up, but we can have the wood to sell.
True.
Again, Dave, I. Voting for it, I just wanna make sure everybody.
I I agree. I agree.
We do have newer people on board and I just wanna make sure they understand.
You spoke about it last time, Brad, what do you think?
I just can't get over the retroactive, like going after them and making them clean it up, you know. If he sold his woods legally and now the expense to clean it up and all the worst. Probably more than he got for selling wood.
Here's the thing, here's the thing that I, yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I asked you not to make that job, go ahead.
But you know, like you bought and sold a stock and you made a bunch of money and then the IRS later passed the law and said you can't do that. And you have to give all your money back and that's all, you're not gonna be happy about it. You know, I hate this. I mean, I definitely think going forward, you know, I I would be super upset and I don't think people should go to legal like that. I don't think they should be like that, like regular ones.
Yeah.
Well. The thing that I wanna do is, this is what I was kind of alluding to in my opening comments. So we don't do anything? So now it's carte blanche. Guy buys another lot like that and does the same thing. Somebody else buys two more lots and does the same thing. Then they cut it down on the park, that's gonna say LIP away without a permit. And sells the wood. But we have to make some hard decisions.
Right.
And we have to put a line in the sand, it's gotta be a real one. To me. It's gotta be something that's going to. Okay, we messed up. We thought, we never would have thought this. We didn't think this ten years ago.
Right.
There is a different way that you can talk about it for future, if you're, you're just saying, let this guy go, okay? You could set it up a different way without being a police action, we can add, go through the planning commission and then we set the whole thing up and. From this day forward, they can't do it. And I shouldn't say this, the day we pass it, going forward, they can't do it. But if we're trying to get this cleaned up. This is the way you have to do it through the police action. All all I was trying to do is, there's two different ways of going about it. If this is the way, the rest of you, I haven't been here, so I'm not fighting it. I I. I said, I'd probably say yes, unless the majority, you know, leaning against it. It might be saying no, but if if it looks like everybody's gonna go. For it and it's gonna be a police action, so be it, so be it.
Just a, just a reminder, you do have to hold a public hearing and.
Right.
For public feedback before you do anything.
Before we do anything.
Well, and we're not saying we're going back. What we're saying is we're going to pass an ordinance. That's all we're doing right this minute, correct?
Right.
Telling us that we we have to.
I don't understand, I just said we don't need, I mean, we've done, we've had that conversation. I mean, what you've shared, we already did at our last meeting as well. What I'm saying is, the point right now is not deciding what we're doing once we have the ordinance. It's to pass an ordinance first.
But we also have to be willing to go forward.
Well, we are willing to go forward. I didn't say past, I said forward, Paul.
Right, right.
Forward.
Right. You know, I I thought about this, I told Carol if it came up. You know, I, I thought about this, I told Carol if it came up, how I was gonna explain the situation, so. Um, those of us who are either history buffs or old. May remember a company by the name of Hooker Chemical Company. And the Hooker Chemical Company, um. Yep. Worked with a local municipality who had a failed infrastructure project. And Hooker Chemical Company said, hey, we need a place to dispose of, of the stuff that we're making in this factory, that employs a lot of the employees in this municipality. But yeah, this is, hey, we got this project, it didn't go through. It's clay lines, perfect, you can bury all the toxic waste you want there. So they did, through the forties, through the fifties, through the sixties. Well, the municipality started to grow. They said, gosh, you know, we, we know we, we let you use this because the town was using it for just a dump site too. Hey, you know, we kinda need that back, we're, we're growing, we need to put in some houses, we need to put in school, actually. So, Hooker Chemical Company said, oh, you know, we'll, we'll sell it back to you, but we want, um, one condition. Is that we are absolved of any and all liability for what is on this property. And the city of Buffalo said, sure, we need it that bad. So they built a school. They had to move the school initially because the, where they were trying to put the footings kept sinking into the sludge that was in this, this failed project. The failed project was the Love Canal. And the city of Buffalo built an entire neighborhood in a school over a toxic waste dump in the seventies. And the Hooker Chemical Company, which is now part of Occident Petroleum, was forced to go back in, remediate and clean it up. Even though they had thought they'd absolve themselves of all liability, because of the circumstances they were held to, to do that, so. That's an extreme example, but there's clear precedent that, you know, if there's a legitimate threat to the public's health and well-being. Which I would say that this is certainly in that vicinity, based on what it could do to, you know, fire hazards particularly, um. You know, you're well within your right to go back and reasonably enforce this ordinance if you adopted.
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing, and I honestly, I would like to hear what the rest of the community thinks.
That's what you're doing right now.
We're having, this is it right now.
We just have to have another public hearing.
No, no, it's tonight.
And there's nobody here to speak on it.
Yep. So. Public hearing now. Open again, and seven fifty. Two, six, or fifty-three? Seven fifty-three. Okay, it's the opportunity for public. To weigh in on name and address for the record, please.
Name, fax, six, six, one, three, Little Turtle Way. I'm just curious, were those trees, was there any bug kill in there, or was it just a beautiful forest before?
It was like the neighboring property.
Help, help each other.
Trees, okay, alright. I, I can't really see the picture that.
Oh, you should drive by.
Where, where is that in?
They took out some nice old trees.
Oh.
No, I'm glad I also can't write.
Okay.
Look, where the tornado landed, you know where it's at.
Uh, Jeff Gray, one thousand nine, Katrina, um. The guy who was land there, went to come in and clear out the trees and maybe muck off of it, go for it, he has every right to do that, but. I think we should have something in place that would require, just like they do with quarries. When you're done using it, whatever, it's gotta be brought back to a certain level of. Whatever you wanna call it at that point, and I would like to see us do that same thing. Because as Dave said, you know, who's to stop another guy from doing the same thing, going out and leveling all the trees and. I don't wanna see that kind of an eyesore left behind, so I would like to see our ordinance. Force them to come back to a certain amount of cleaning up. To that point.
Okay, thank you.
And then, oh, Kim Fox, six, six, one, three, West Little Turtle Way, wait a minute. Uh, so what would that, that be, that cleanup standard, you know, is it every little stick, is it? You know, how, how clean is clean and how dirty is dirty, so you, you put yourself open to that part of it, so. You know, I, I would just.
Part in blue.
Part in blue. I mean, is it gonna be where you gotta, um, uh, chip it all up, or, you know, can you just have some piles, uh? No piles, no pile, okay. Okay, so it'd be chipped up. And Tim, you said there was some history with this person, which I'm not. Aware of, so you, you probably have some other situations where you've had a, uh, issue with the person doing this.
Correct. Sometimes he's been agreeable to work with, other times it's been a little bit of struggle.
And part of the concern that sort of changed my mind was. That, that shows a lot of disrespect for the community, in my opinion. That it was about making money and that's it. I don't care what I leave, I don't care what others have to look at, I just care about my money. And I think we have an obligation as a council in a village to protect everybody in it, not just the person who has the money to. Buy property and cut trees.
Is this lakeside, or is this the, the other side?
Back block, back. About a three acre parcel, I think.
You got some pretty nice houses back there.
Yeah.
Being a little upset, but I'm just saying, if this was done, of course, they're not in that area, but if it was done across, uh, is that River Road? How we know we'd say anything? Because that's not, you're out of, you're out of the village.
It's not a zoned community.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, so that.
Again, I wanna make perfect clear, I'm, I'm probably gonna vote for doing it, I just, I'm sure everybody understood the whole thing, that's it. No more. Not trying to discourage, just.
Then what else?
L, Helmski, six, six, three, five, West Little Turtle Way, wait a minute. I'm not familiar with the language that's, uh, already in the village's lights, the ordinance. So.
Copyright there.
Yeah. Um, but I'm just wondering. Um, you wanna amend whatever's in there. Obviously, there was nothing in there from the beginning for this person who owns that to. Secure, uh. A permit, or, cause he owns the property or something. Or, or there was no restrictions on, um.
Right, that's a conundrum.
Okay.
There used to be years ago. And then no one did this, and so the decision that it was to be, what was the word you used? Word, and it was a good word, but anyway, that, I liked it a lot. To not have it there anymore because it hadn't been useful or needed. Yes, and was too broad, included too much, it meant that if a tree fell in my backyard, I was obligated right now to do something because of my neighbors. So that was part of the issue. Now we're finding, what's is our third event in this year alone.
And, and I will, um, yeah. Jessica brought up a good point earlier, uh, about this, that, you know, most of the things that are played ordinance were adopted retroactively to circumstances that have arisen.
Good point, yeah.
At one point in time, there wasn't an ordinance in the village that said you couldn't have stacked tires and junk cars in your yard, you know.
True, good point.
If this was a home site, it wouldn't have been a major issue, but.
Same, they built it, you couldn't build on it, or unless you cleaned it up.
Right, there's no spot to put a house until they move stuff, it's every.
Whoever buys this house, if they buy it, put a lot on there, has got a lot of cleanup.
Yeah.
You have to go look.
Now, this is not a good picture, it's, it's tall and huge and. That looks like it's just on the ground, it's not, it's big.
Oh. It's a substantial problem.
Yes, it is.
There was no effort to be like, any type of nice or neat organization, like that is like.
Right.
That's a hack and whack, like they were, they had to try to make it look like that. As quick as they could go, I mean, I've seen a lot of properties that have got logged. That is probably the worst, trees are every which way, they're not even all, like, fell the same way.
No.
No, yeah, it's a tangled mess.
In talking with the adjacent property owner, spoken with one of them, um. Said the, the guy did, said, yeah, I'm gonna, it's gonna look like a tornado came through here when I went done. Was, what he told them then, when one of the other neighbors came out to confront him, there was a verbal altercation between the two. Site, was what he shared with me, but.
I know my kids would.
And that's another important thing too. That is a legal threshold known as an attractive nuisance. You know, that's why you have to take doors off refrigerators when you put it out on your turf, like. There are other things in this advice, not just the fire hazard, but a safety hazard for kids.
Go exploring, and it's the way it's stacked, anything could happen. Good point, I hadn't even thought that.
Okay, is anyone else? Okay, public comment is closed at eight. Hey. So what's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
I'm gonna say that I respect everybody's feelings about it, I just. I can't come to vote yes on it, because we have to go retroactive on it, like I totally, I'm fifty-one, forty-nine, I just can't get. The last percentage or two, and I. So don't, don't feel like I'm, like spiting anyone or disrespecting your opinions, they're all great, and.
Second question. So, all right, if we enact this, pass this ordinance, now you're saying we have to go back. Okay, so let's wait two months, do we still have to go back? Do we wait four months, do we still have to go back? I mean, that's what the concern is, going back to enforce. At what point do we decide we don't go back and enforce? Or it doesn't apply, or do you follow what I'm saying, that's the concern?
You know, um. I've not thought of it from that perspective, I mean, the way I would envision. You know, enforcing this is, you know, contacting them and giving them an ample window, you know, ninety, hundred and twenty days, something very reasonable. You know, we're happy to work with you, you know, you know, our D P W property is available if you need for wood chips to drop off, that kind of stuff, because people come and take that, you know, so. Yeah, I would. Well, my perspective, this is still, I, I have, I don't like the retroactive. But the fact of the matter is, we don't want this occurring moving forward. Um, and, you know, I, I was opposed to it for that reason. But the few that showed up, uh, the majority of them, which are the folks that we're representing, don't like it either, so, I, I mean, I've been. You know, I, I'll make a motion and move forward with it. And we gotta vote on it in a way or another, so. Much made by Latte to, uh, go forward, accepting the ordinance twenty twenty-four oh one, like quote amendment. You can still discuss, if you're not comfortable, we don't have to have a second immediately, so anybody else wanna talk?
All we know, what you're saying, I, I agree, um, to me, that's what hurt my comments, where I was trying to precursor some of this stuff. In my opening comments at the beginning of the meeting is that, uh, to me. It concerns the future.
Right, right, and that's why I said, I totally understand it, I don't like the idea that we're going back and go.
Right.
But, and moving forward and protect the community, and, and honestly, the turning factor was the majority of the folks that showed up. Are in agreeance that this is okay. And, 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 you know, it's not really about us individually, we're supposed to be representing them.
But, um, they didn't come in here, I, I don't believe, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, so you speak right up. They, they were here for whatever reason you're here for, but not because of this particular property, was it? No, that you came here and see, so, basing your.
I understand that, but this is, this was a public hearing, it was, it was out there, so if folks had something to say, and chose to, we, we can only work with the information we're given.
Right.
The, the ones that showed up, regardless of why they showed up, you know, are members of our community, and they're in agreeance that that's not.
It just bothers me that the people that have a problem didn't show up.
Right. Four complaints, we had four complaints.
Four people called our office.
So we did have four complaints, one this morning.
This is the, um. Is it, are you saying, okay, so did you say that there are two more instances of this also happening in the last month?
This spring, yes.
This spring?
Yeah. One of them is cleaning it up because it, it's working. The other one's a, a far more nuanced problem, yeah.
Um, but.
All his wife, Tim. That's a tactic I've used in the past.
Yeah.
What part is the?
Sorry.
Go for it.
Um, so I would say, like. Maybe last meeting, I felt a bit more problematic about the reverse going after. But with the new information that people are upset about it. And there seems to be an emerging issue with cutting. Um, I would hate to see it continue or be allowed to have more time to fester. Such as, you know, like the towns that are having issues where they. Fail for shoplifting limits. They're having big problems, and they're probably gonna reverse that. So, looking at it, it's starting to have a bit more weight. That it probably should. Address, even though if it was only that first issue. I would be, you know. Sorrowful, but it seems to be starting to be maybe a little up there.
But we can, we can pass an ordinance. Without being a police action. To take care of it, future.
Yeah.
So anything could be, without passing this, we'd have to go back in and have to go through the planning commission, and then to us, because. By taking the police action, you're doing it one way, there's two different ways to do. You'd have a regular ordinance passed, that would take care of anything in the future.
I don't get the police action comment, what do you mean by that?
So on a zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance are adopted with the legal right of grandfathering. So when you put something in zoning, if something was legally existing. At the time it happened, and then you amend the ordinance, it is legally protected under the grandfather law.
Right.
In a police ordinance situation, grandfathering only exists if you put it in the ordinance, so otherwise, it would, it would not have a grandfather. So you could do this and have it worded to say that, after the effective date of this ordinance.
Right.
This is the standard, so everyone prior to that point in time is.
Left alone.
Left alone.
And that's all I was trying to point out, you can still.
You can do that, yeah, yes.
Well, I guess I would say, so if we went that route. Does that mean that four households are gonna show up asking us why we didn't take action now? When we could have.
That's a possibility. And, and therein lies, their, their comment's gonna be, if it's bad enough to stop someone in the future, why is it something that I have to live with now?
The, the same can be said of many topics, many topics, you know, so keep that in mind, but still.
But the animal control, for instance, that's been one of the ones, and there are a lot more complaints about that than the four that we had on this.
I, I'm, I can't agree with the retroactive enforcement. And I don't. I would support the ordinance, it was re written not to be retroactive.
Yeah, I struggle with that too, and I, I said that, and I still struggle with that, but I would like to see the property cleaned up. And as long as the village is willing to give them ample time and assist them in any fashion to, you know, to, to not make it. Such an immediate burden, because I mean, this was, this was done with. They, they knew this was gonna be like that, you know, so. You know, and that is disrespectful to the community, although there was nothing in place, at least I would like to see cleaned up, I just. You know, um, I, I don't like the retroactive either, because we don't want that, we don't want that kind of eyesore, that sets a precedence. You know, um, and if we don't. Make him clean up, more likely than going to, you know. I mean, I, I, I'm on, I'm on the line with that too, like I said. I, I don't like the retroactive thing, but we do need something on the books, and that does need to be cleaned up, we don't want that in the community, and. You know, there are, there are multiple reasons for that, you know, um, visual, um, just, uh, like we said, the, the children possibly getting in there and getting hurt. Attention for fire, you know.
We might not want an altercation.
Right. Yeah, and, and that's hard for me to say, because I said from day one, I, I like the idea that people can do what they want on their property, but, you know. Um, this does affect the neighbors, you know, that's one of the things that.
I don't think we're gonna be able to split this baby any better than if we don't make that, if we make the exception for me. And I don't like it. From the state forward. Yeah, no, I don't know how else to, 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 to do this. Unless we're just gonna go, okay, both feet in, take him to court, because you know he's gonna go to court. By, I would assume that by his previous interactions with us. And by the fact that he bragged about, allegedly bragged about that being, yeah, it's gonna look like a tornado.
Right.
And then left.
No, but that's, that's gonna be approached with like any other white, really, you know, we're gonna have to, you know, this. And then, you know, go from there, and so I don't think that's. You know, that's something that we consider.
Well, I don't think we stop. I didn't tell him.
Oh, absolutely not, you know.
I don't think we stop, I think we continue to tell them to clean it up and stuff, but.
But we haven't told her yet. We haven't talked with her at all from this official.
Correct.
Village.
Correct.
And I guess.
But my way of thinking is. I don't like being retroactive either. But in detail, no, I'm forty-nine and a half percent.
Yeah, and like I said, I really don't like it either, but that's why we have a motion to, to vote on it, because that's, I think, and I, I don't, I don't have a dog in this thought, like, I understand all these arguments. And trying to give you the, the level key of what it's gonna look like, one way or the other, you know.
Keep in mind, there's right now, there's three that are.
Well, two, one is being cleaned up and there.
No, 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 I'm not, three of them in, in this group, that is against it, it can get passed with a four. In the stone, it's a hundred percent legal, it's just that we're voicing our opinions that we'd rather have it. Done the other way and not go back to cleaning up, but on the other hand, I wouldn't want that, if that was next to my house, as much as I'm saying here. I really don't want.
I can agree with all that, and, and once we jump through all these hoops and if we pass it, and we have to take him to court. What's the judge gonna say?
Yeah.
You can't make up a retroactive law.
Action, we can do it, the judge will not.
Doesn't mean a judge is gonna support it.
And I agree with that a hundred percent.
The man did not break any rules when he did this, even though he was a butthole for doing it.
Right.
He didn't break any rules when he did it. And they penalized him now because we didn't.
Yep. So do we want to? We have a motion on the table or on the floor, it has not been seconded, so it doesn't have to be. Can die for lack of a second, or someone can second it, and we can vote it up or down. Or do we want to amend it to say after this date? Because my thing is about the future.
Right.
Hey, I got away with it there, I got this other one I can buy.
Right.
And I made X amount of dollars on the last one.
That creates its own enforcement issue where you hold second person to that standard and say, well, so-and-so got away with it, why can't I?
Correct, since we didn't have it in place at the time.
And then you, then you look selective in that scenario. You know. You either have a standard or you don't.
Well, both, both avenues.
Yeah.
You know, looks like we have a, you know.
Yeah.
Intended targets, we'll say, so, I mean, that's, that's.
We would just tell them the same thing we tell people now, it was grandfathered in, you know.
Right.
We've got, we've got situations out there that we don't allow now.
Right.
But we didn't go back and make anybody change anything, because we were retroactive. If they're grandfathered in, because there was no ordinance. They're home free. As much as it goes to me, I see this guy home free because we didn't have a ordinance. Worded properly in the back.
Well, he's home free.
And he pointed it, he pointed it out with this myth, and we can change it, but. I don't believe we can go back and change it for it.
Were you about to say something, Tim?
No, it's just hot in here. Let's improve an air conditioning vent before this.
Yeah, we gotta get to that part on the agenda here. For the air conditioner.
I, I'll say something to the rest of the people, I will oppose if the rest of the board decides to pass this. I've said I'm gonna vote no, I will support the enforcement of it. Because I re- respect those views very well, and I think that, you know, if. If the majority rules here, like I can get behind the enforcement of, you know, Dakota, I'm gonna. I'd be supportive on the enforcement act of it.
Yep.
Unless we change the date, then.
Well, the majority does, yeah, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Yeah, and I think it's going up, I think it's going up fast, because you got four votes.
Yeah, as much as I like to say, you know, to do the dating, you know, I, with the fans of the community, and so I really would like to see that. You know, like I did that with malice, or with, with, not necessarily malice, but with the intent of just, you know.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and.
You gotta try to make.
Right, right, yeah. Exactly, so. You won't choose, uh, you said, you're gonna second?
I will second the motion.
Okay, so the motion was made and seconded, a seconded. Uh, to pass ordinance twenty twenty-four oh one, light code amendment. Ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Further discussion, seeing none? Okay, roll call, please.
Joe Latte.
Yes.
Robert Larway.
No.
Brad Peavy?
No.
Carol Shannon? Yes. Carrie Behringer?
Yes.
Val Cuny?
No.
Dave Torgerson?
Yes. Motion carries, four-three. All right. Make it so, Mr. Sun. Great discussion, everybody.
Yeah, and it's hard, it was a hard decision.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not happy with it, but. I said we'd do it at that in summer shacksville, but that might not go out to later then.
Yeah, darn it, anyway.
All right, resolution twenty twenty-four oh six. Special assessment role. This is the one we have to do every year for Broomfield, and yep, one for Sherman.
Sherman's a voted in millage, which will actually be on there.
Oh, that's right.
I believe August ballot to renew their one mil township wide. Because we lie in two townships, um, the southern portion, which is the area shaded in. Olive mustard yellow, um. We contract back with the Ottawa Sherman Township Fire Department to provide coverage to that half of the village. Since it lies in Broomfield Township, if we did not, uh, fire protection would be from Wheatland, which is in Remus. Um, the village has done this special assessment district for twenty plus years at this point in time. Um, and it's the easiest, simplest way, because we can't do a millage in the village that is only a portion of the village. The constitution requires you to levy taxes uniformly across your jurisdiction. So, our Sherman Township folks all pay one mil directly to the township. Our Broomfield Township folks pay one mil to us, who then check, check back to the township. What part department, I should say. Um, we've had, I believe, one call this year, just asking if this was the renewal that you do every year, and nothing new, and they were fine with that, so. That is all I have, sir.
Okay. The resolution is before us, resolution twenty twenty-four oh six. Any further discussion?
You had your public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Public hearing.
Oh, yeah, it's under public hearing.
It's open at eight twenty-one. Eight twenty-one. Um, any further, okay.
Yeah, I have some property out there, and it's just vacant lots, so for me, this is just added taxes that. Does me absolutely nothing, you know, doesn't help me at all, I've argued this before. But I'd like to be exempted from this, this particular millage for this fire protection, because again, I have vacant lots, no instructions on it. And, uh, et cetera. I don't know if I need any more to explain any more than that, I'd sort of go back to Tim with the, uh. The county not passing that is six point one, because I don't see the value for me personally. I understand it for buildings and, and why you're doing it, but Remus coming out for my property would suit me fine. Is there anything else? Yeah, I don't have that problem either. Put me a water, put me a water in the spring.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just have one thing here real quick, that, um, the way it reads right now with the, the wording for the ballot. They are not gonna do it rolling back, they're gonna do the full one mil. This time, so just so that you know, normally they roll it back to ninety-three-three, but to require a millage roll back, but this is gonna be renewed and restored up to the original one mil. Not that it's gonna make a huge difference, yeah. That can be a huge difference, FYI, so, and then my other comment was that. That Broomfield Township stuff also covers. You're gonna wait for them versus five minutes away.
But, now, okay, I'll take my chances, I guess, with that, and so. Um, yeah, and I support the Ottawa Town, uh, Sherman Township Fire Department, we donated, I unfortunately couldn't get to their auction, but.
But it is a good point that it covers.
But I still would like to be exempt.
Further public comment? Okay, seeing none, eight twenty-five, public comment closed.
I have one last question, and it says I have to submit a written document for that, is that what I need to do tonight?
Or? Pardon, you objected in person.
Oh, that's fine then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So after this, if you do wanna object, I believe the filing fee with the state tax commission is like seventy-five or a hundred bucks to appeal it to the state.
Oh, I didn't know this. You don't wanna pay the three bucks? Yeah, that's just like Paul saying, well, you, you gotta go and get an attorney, that's gonna cost you. Yeah, okay. It is a hundred bucks. Send my objection.
Oh, my gosh, all right, Mr. Just, that's good, I like it.
All right. Cheryl entertaining motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Motion made, Shannon to accept resolution twenty twenty-four oh six. I'll second it back.
Thank you.
Bob Larway. Further discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Robert Larway.
Yeah.
Brad Peavy?
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Carrie Behringer?
Yeah.
Val Cuny?
Yes.
Joe Latte?
Yes.
Dave Torgerson?
Yes, motion carries. Public comment. This one, this one's free.
We're so glad you're here tonight.
Okay, go on to existing business, resolution twenty twenty-four oh four. This is for village committees.
Third time's charm, I hope. Third time's charm, so, uh, after the discussion last month. Went back and, uh, made some changes to the wording on the standing committees. Um, so, I'll just run through these very briefly. The election commission is established by the charter, it requires membership in the charter of the clerk, treasurer, and president. Really doesn't do anything anymore since elections are no longer in the village's purview. The finance committee is by resolution, also the chair, the treasurer, clerk, and president. They are primary check signers. They review the drafted budget and make a recommendation to the village council, they review the proposed budget amendments and also recommend those to the council. Annual review update our compensation plan and job descriptions. Then also maybe ask for review bids and proposals on things like property liability insurance, audit, legal counsel. There's an and there, oh, I think I was gonna say, like, engineering services. Um, professional service contracts. Uh, personnel committee is a committee of the whole, it can do ad hoc committees for special projects. Um, reviews and updates our employee handbook. Uh, handles the performance evaluation of yours truly. And in the event that this position is vacant, would leave the process in hiring. Since as you remember from your charter study session last month, you are required by the charter to have a village manager. Believers on committee is created through an agreement with the L I P O A, it is supposed to meet quarterly, but has not done so in the last two years. Mainly because the lake restoration committee has taken up most of our engagement with the association. Three community, or council members and the manager are our representatives, um, share information, waves, and resources for the community better. The joint lake restoration committee create also by an agreement with the L I P O A, three council members meets as needed. Responsible for pretty much all things connected to the lake restoration project, seeking the permits and working. With the L I P O A to appoint our community members at large that serve the committee. The new committee would be the public safety committee, this would be comprised of three council members. Act an advisory role to the council and evaluate public safety issues and concerns in the community. Provide oversight for any, if you need a water.
I'm sorry, no.
No, you're good. You guys wanna pour water?
No, thank you very much, I'm sorry.
He's tearing up.
Uh, provide oversight for any public safety, police, or fire millages or special assessments that we have. Research matters of public safety, service levels, and make recommendations to the council. Also would be charged with oversight for ordinance enforcement, emergency management, neighborhood watch, and animal control services. Review traffic data and studies to recommend changes to speed limits and street lights on village streets, and review, recommend T C L traffic control orders. Related to our regulatory signage, so I e moving like a yield to a stop sign or putting in a stop, something like that.
How do we do? That's what we asked for, isn't it? Anybody have any questions for Tim? Now, the only one we haven't, uh, after, when you pass, if we pass this, the only one we have to do is a public safety committee. Right, we have everything else in place.
I just gotta cramp them, not stay. You want me to leave now?
No, not tonight, not, you're good. He's volunteering.
Okay. Cheryl entertaining motion. Behringer moves that we accept resolution twenty twenty-four oh four, village committee assignments. And seconded by Larway. Further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Brad Peavy?
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Carrie Behringer, yes, Val Cuny?
Yes.
Joe Latte?
Yes.
Robert Larway?
Yeah.
Dave Torgerson?
Yes, motion carries. So, as long as we're all here, let's have some folks on the public safety committee, I need three. Ms. Behringer, she'd be one. Mr. Latte would be the second, we have a third.
You want, I can go on, I've, I'm only here seven months, but, um.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I'll be the alternate.
An alternate would be Brad.
I'll be his alternate for the winter.
Job sharing, I like it.
We have more time during the week and.
Put that down?
Yeah.
Thirty percent of his pay is already.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
That's better.
Like all the other committees, whenever yes, items go out, the rest of the members get carbon copy, so you're, you're staying.
Right, we all, we all get you. Well, those of you who have eaten, okay. Okay. Then item number ten. It's an easy meeting today.
We haven't even got there yet.
Do you have a fan? No. Oh, I got one, never mind.
Okay, so.
Kind of do the tank top.
Well, natural gas service and H-back bids. H-backs bids.
The cost to supply our building with natural gas will be four thousand thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents from consumers. Two hundred of that is the actual connection fee. The other thirty-eight hundred is the cost share on the infrastructure for what they did to the project. We received bids until last Friday, um, replacing the dead geothermal system. Uh, there is a discrepancy in this between whether or not the zoning needs to be replaced or not. McGuire feels it doesn't. He thinks the performance issues were all tied back to the failing geo system. Uh, the other contractors included it in their bid to do it. Um, McGuire would be putting in a manna system. Custom would be carrier, my plus it heating and cooling would be train. I did just for funsies, asked Walton what it would cost to do a new geo. Sixteen-five was his price for an open loop. Uh, he said it's really cost prohibitive to do it closely because we have sandy soil. So it doesn't have the thermal properties to really work in our favor. So, you are left with a ballpark total project cost ranging from fourteen thousand two thirty-nine to, you know, sixteen nine forty-eight, depending on which one of the bids you go with. This includes also replacing the electric water heater, um, been here since the original building. Uh, Councilmember Cuny asks about potentially going to gas, and we have four faucets in this building that use hot water. Just there's no cost savings to do it just based on the little water you seem to be having. Um, in one of the faucets, you never get hot water anyway, which is the men's room. Because this is a fly-by-and-grade building and the pipe goes all the way there and by the time you would get the hot water, you've long since been done washing your hands, so. It would have been great if we put a circulator in when we did the project in two thousand and seven, but it's a little bit late today.
You know, I did notice that they have fifty gallon water here.
That's the way I have now.
I know, but that's a little overkill if you've got three hot water faucets.
Yeah.
And no showers.
We should install. We go and takes care of that, not we need it.
Anyway. Um, the only question I had was, I didn't see, could be wrong. McGuire, did they say it's a two-stage a manna? Or a one-stage?
It's two-stage.
Okay, so. And everything else says, everybody of the other bids said two-stage.
Yeah, I looked up the, the model number, it's a two-stage. Don't check.
I don't know, these bids are all over the board, so I asked him, well, you know, what was on the RFP, like, you know, showing the stuff.
Right.
You know, Jessica could confirm this, a lot of these guys didn't read it. Yeah, they would call and be like.
None of them.
I mean, none of them, right. I mean, I can see that, because like, some people bid a gas.
Uh, right.
Water heater, I mean, that wasn't on the bid.
Yeah, it's a two-stage. Yeah, then a manna might also be two-stage, okay, you know.
What's the, what does that indicate, how is zoning, like what it doesn't do and everyone else?
His, his price of head replacement is an extra two hundred bucks, so that's what. So this building is zoned, uh, this room here is one zone, the offices are a different zone. Um, that was done because it was our hope that if we could lessen the heating demand in this half of the building, we would eventually have lower bills because, you know, this, this room doesn't get utilized like the other half of the building does. You know, we can shut the door and, you know, keep it at sixty-five in here, you know, and keep the offices at a warmer temperature, which we never really cared for doing when we had the geothermal business so efficient that you know, and I think that where you're gonna see the biggest cost implication is the summer, you know, geothermal, it is dirt cheap to keep this place ice cold summer. You know, the winter, um, now that homework says went to a, a higher rate, because initially it was a fifty percent off on our electric rate, now it's twenty-five percent off. Um.
Good night.
Thank you for coming.
And we also had a four thousand dollar grant when we put the thing in, you know, forty-five hundred ones too. You know. I'm not a fan of consumers. You know, and, you know, but that's the only option, but.
Right.
DT is that on the satellite.
So basically a two thousand dollar difference between converting over to natural gas and putting a post cell or, you know, open, uh, open it, so.
Yeah, you know, and that, and that brings in the issue that Brent has talked about, and it's correct, you know, that open system will put pressure on our well, you know, and cost of drilling new wells is ballpark eight grand. You know? So.
I don't think any of these furnaces would be just fine.
Yeah.
Um.
You're right.
They're all ninety-six percent efficient, which is pretty good, I mean, these things, they keep a running forever, I mean, they really can, like, these things are I don't know, and then once you already have the natural gas and stuff, you know, often I, I don't know what just, a furnace would be even be a lot cheaper, you know, if they don't have to tender stuff out and
Yeah.
other stuff, it's you know, in and out.
I mean, lower maintenance, but I'm, I'm, I'm thinking the cost of operation. You know, and where we go spend a year on heat and on air conditioning, you know, with going with the consumers, uh, option versus, you know, the potential, you know.
Do we have, do we have any information on what the actual risk to the well is, or like? About, I mean, I know what the rest, seventeen-year-old. You know, and I can tell you, since they need to replace the, the pump, you know, it's fine, but, you know, manganese was in the system and the manganese is burnt point out, you know, you can get some mineral problems if you're over pumping and was the over pumping due to the, the declining health of the geo system? You know, because it's been there. You know, we've noticed manganese in the water for several years, so. You know, I, I quite generally don't care what the council decides to do, I just want to get air conditioning in the buildings. Pick, pick one and go, guys.
I had to go over the spreadsheet to like, you know, look at some of these, because a lot of them, like, Martins didn't figure electrical in there, um, some other people are figuring gas. Howard.
And see, and like, the electrical is a whole other, you know, problem that these guys had to negotiate because the geo isn't tied to our main circuit board. My breaker board. It's on a separate meter and it's on a separate panel, that, that, so we, that's why you get that cheaper rate on that, so we're gonna have to abandon that and bring the power back from that wall over the, and down to come in. Um, the wall, the, the wall where we're gonna have to run gas to, the entire outside wall here is not gonna work to bring gas into that, so we gotta bring it off the side here, kind of run it up and over to get back to the furnace, because you've got that well, uh, two other things on that wall where you can't just come in through the sidewall to get back to where you're going to do the furnace. It's good, it's doable, don't get me wrong.
And, and the bid doesn't include that?
What's that?
Uh, the electrical.
McGuire, yeah.
But McGuire says that you can fix the zone control, but
Yeah.
I mean, we've had that for seventeen years and the zone control's never worked.
It worked, it worked initially. It worked back in the day.
I mean, if it was fixable, why shouldn't it fix fifteen years ago, or whenever it stopped working?
Never.
I, you know, it's like, oh, I, I don't know.
So, we're just discussing right now between.
Well, we gotta make a decision.
Yeah, no, but I mean, either replace geo or
Oh.
which, is that what we're discussing, or is, are we putting geo out?
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Is that what we?
Yeah.
Because, well, I know there was some talk about that this particular building may be sold to build a new business for us, so does either one of those options? Are they either one better for the future sale of this building if that, we go that way, does it turn the geo not desirable on the market, or does it not really?
I don't, I think we're on natural gas basically more.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah.
Like, if we're on propane, like, that, that's way closer, but, but natural gas is so cheap to run, and this stuff, like. I mean, Tim's right, I think we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna use some ground in the summer, but I think we'll heat it cheaper. So I think, you know, all in all, it's gonna be.
That market might turn around.
Yeah. I think he is gonna be a wash in the winter, I think you're gonna be on par. Mainly because the rates gone up from from Tri-County.
Yeah, but I mean, uh, we're gonna pay for something then.
I mean, we're, yeah.
So to me, it's just, to me, personally, I after thinking about it a lot, I think that it's just not worth trying to resuscitate because we can't even get a new part for the geothermal. Well, to me, it's just natural gas, even though I don't like to deal with consumers. Um, for many reasons.
I told my wife she's getting a raise, it's the villagers signing on. She did, she retired there.
I'm glad.
Well, that.
That's a conflict I can't.
Oh, darn it.
Can we just pay like the monthly payment, or is uh, consumers charge you that upfront, no matter what?
For us, it's, it's the charge because we're non-residential.
No, they don't want your finance, no.
They're doing residential in our community right now, and they're not charging to take it from the road to the house.
That, that's DT though. This is the company that provides electrical service in your community without a franchise agreement.
Tom, what do you think? Gas or geothermal fix?
I'd go with the geothermal.
Okay. Gary, what do you think? Geothermal gas? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Now we're just deciding which bid we want to take, right?
So, yeah. Okay, first thing they have to do is approve natural gas service.
Right.
Before we do anything, which is four thousand dollars. I'll make a motion that getting gas from over here. Make some motion to get to, uh, prove the natural gas service. Seconded by Cuny.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Carrie Behringer. Yes? Yeah, are you approval of the natural gas?
Yes, thank you.
Val Cuny?
Yes.
Joe Lattie?
Yes.
Robert Laraway?
Yeah.
Rand Peavy?
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Dave Torgerson.
Yes. Okay. unanimous, now. Which bid do we want to accept? I'll start off by saying, of all these companies, I've had dealings with two of them. And custom plumbing, plumbing and heating has been really good for the last three houses I've built. That's just me. But I'm pretty much familiar with them. I know a lot of the guy, a couple of the guys that work there. They've been really good, as far as I'm concerned, just whenever I had an issue or a problem, they're out, in fact, they, two of them live out here.
Who is that?
Like, um, custom plumbing and heating, out of Mount Pleasant. But that's just my personal, that's the only one, then the other one I've had is McGuire. Did you have any issues with McGuire? I wouldn't use him, you know, just me.
I have just mostly questions like on how RFPs work, like, if it says in RFP that you have to replace the zone control and you have a lump sum bid, like, you get to be like, no, you have to replace the zone control for that price, I mean, I don't know if that because like, all, all the other bids were. Yeah, most of the people item like, instead of another thing, but like fixing or to put a new zone control in was like twelve to fifteen hundred dollars based on the other some of the other bids.
So which one didn't have it?
McGuire's doesn't have it, he wants to fix the ones that we've had for.
Oh.
And didn't we want that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you do, like, you know, because.
It saves money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Buy the mine and save the money. Especially on cooling, kind of, we're not using this section, this, you know, that can be the majority of the expense, uh, switching over to new service.
Are those wifi thermostats? Because wifi, like, on a schedule, like, that's sweet too, because like, on the weekend, you can turn the heat down, and then you can have it kick on at six in the morning and it's warm Monday morning, you need to live here, but.
Yeah, we did do that with the geo because, uh, all the, all the direction that we have when we put the system in was it's more efficient to just eat, set it, forget it than, uh, the monkey would bring the geo up and down.
Did they put stat in, stats in here?
No, we didn't have thermostats in there, but.
Okay, because you're gonna have to buy one of those, that's gonna be the. Well, some of those won't, they don't always coincide, or do they come out and look at them?
Yeah.
Hey, you said some of these people that will come and read, they all came here.
I saw it on customs, but they had two wifi thermostats.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Nest thermostats are ninety bucks on Amazon.
Well, depends.
I got three of them for Christmas, I got two I can give you. Yeah. Apparently people don't know how Amazon lists work.
So like, to me, like, I would say Martin's out because the typical wiring was around a thousand bucks, so that brings him up to twelve-five. Because he has no electrical on there, and that's the same one that Rick McGuire does, the same type of furnace.
Here's the thing, is there any preference between carrier or manna and train? That, I, I do have a preference in that one.
What's your preference?
Train.
I had Mount Pleasant Heating and Cooling, they've done work at my place and they come.
I think all of us are gonna come to the table with different opinions, just.
Right.
Pick one.
No, I never had, I've never had it. Yeah, I'm just saying, when I had it experienced, the, that I had experienced it.
Yeah.
When I'd used.
Yeah. Actually, I, I think carrier probably is better than a manna.
Custom seems to have the headwind right now.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd say customer or Mount Pleasant, either one is good.
Yeah, not, I'd buy it either depending on.
Customer is cheaper, so I guess I go with the cheaper one.
Is there a, there a better warranty on train than there would be on the carrier?
No, actually the warranty is less. Yeah, that's what I didn't like on that one. That's why I didn't want to fight for it, but just based on all the reviews, the ones I've been from the systems, the train was the, the better. The warranty, pretty much the same, you know, is not.
Did everybody hear that, uh? The, the warranty on the train is less than what is on the carrier. In comparing custom to, uh, Mount Pleasant.
Was it a five-year?
Yeah, ten-year on this one. Yeah, and the other one's a ten-year.
So customers are better all the way. Five-year on compressor, twenty years on, but I can't read it.
Yes.
But, the compressors are expensive.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, that, that being said, I mean, I think custom is probably our.
I, i- if the one thing I, in my the one thing I would ask is that, a little bit with a you know, a fifteen percent contingency either way, because a lot of, a lot of these are moving parts where you're gonna have to coordinate with consumers and that kind of stuff, they gotta come out more than once, that's, that's probably the only reason.
So we have to make sense.
Yep.
Well, we have a recommendation for custom, because they have the warranties longer.
Well, yeah, let's, let's, I'll make the motion that we go with custom heating and plumbing.
Motion made by. And, uh, the little buffer?
And a fifteen percent buffer, yes, yes.
Custom plumbing, eighty, with the fifteen percent buffer.
Seconded by Laraway.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Sure. Val Cuny?
Agreed.
Thank you. Joe Lattie?
Yes.
Robert Laraway?
Yeah.
Rand Peavy?
Yes.
Carol Shannon? Barry Behringer, yeah. Dave Torgerson.
Yes, motion carries, seven zero. There you go, Tim, we just, we're looking out for you, buddy.
Yes, we are.
See you guys morning. The morning natural gas for AC. Come back.
That's true. Home policy, cause my house is always like sixty-five degrees.
Yeah, you could do that too. Get the RC AC in here. All right. Twenty, twenty twenty-four road patrol millage levies. Yeah, find another prediction of the future that I was.
Fun times here, folks, in Isabella County where the voters in our fermeous tally approved a one-third mill for three years dedicated tax to fund. Additional law enforcement services and road patrols, quote, to be provided by the Isabella County Sheriff's Office. So you can't divert the money elsewhere. It's literally restricted to an agreement with the sheriff's office. Based on the way the invoices have been running this year, um, you're gonna end up, my guess, with between fifteen and eighteen thousand. In a fund balance carry forward into the next fiscal year to conserve. Here's the fun thing. I don't know, we're gonna have road patrols in January.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Nobody does.
Right.
So what do you do?
There's the refund process, like hard then, must be, like if we, if we leverage the millage, right, that's what we're talking about, we leverage it. And then there's no road patrol, we have nothing to spend it on, what do we do with the money?
Refund this.
You have to refund it to everybody.
Yeah, so, so all that drama about tax bills, magnify that by now trying to prorate based on taxable values. But twenty thousand dollar refund for two thousand parcels. You're gonna have people that are gonna get cut a check for three cents or five cents.
It's gonna cost.
It's gonna cost more to do it, yeah, you know. Um, you know, I asked our attorney and I have not heard back from him yet. Would it be conceivable to levy nothing? Pay for the rest of the calendar year through the proceeds that we're gonna carry forth? And if we have anything additional that comes in contract wise. Cover that for this year out of general fund and then get reimbursed the next year from the millage, um.
Re-implement the bill.
Re-implement, yeah, cause you, you would have one more year left. This is three years, this was the first year we're collecting. Um, you know.
Re-implement, re what, what'd you say?
So you, you wouldn't.
We would not lever the millage this year.
Right.
Correct. And then we cover it with our general fund, whatever we needed to plus the money that we have. And then next year, we pay ourselves back by lever.
If they're still there, or we haven't done something else at the ballot box.
Okay, that, that, that's kinda what I was looking at, is what's our contingency in there? So, okay, I got it.
No, we don't know if we can do that.
Right.
We don't know the answer yet. I don't know that answer. You know, but, but at the core of the issue is, I don't know how ethically we can in good faith levy. A third of a mill or even a fifteenth of a mill. With zero certainty that this service is gonna be provided past December thirty-first.
Well, you know, it will be Armageddon if it don't, if it, if the kind doesn't pass this. They're gonna be slash, slashing everything. They don't need us. They're looking at twenty-eight hundred bucks, eh? I don't care. From a month or whatever it is.
Okay, so we can't really decide till, till the attorney tells us something.
Well, well, you gotta decide tonight. We're, we're gonna have to print tax bills before your next meeting, folks.
Is it gonna screw up the county and stuff by take, getting that off there, like not levered, like?
Yeah, like. It's our millage, we. What?
Yeah, it's our millage, so we put it on, the county won't have any say, but what I will say is, if you're gonna entertain this. Leaving zero would be easier because if you levy anything else. And let's say we don't use all the money. The one mill that we will end up, like for this year, we have leftover money. We'll have to prorate that to this year's tax rule, next year's levy gets prorated, those owners ch- change. Which means we, uh, there is so much more that goes into prorating and sending tax bills back. I would much prefer you to levy zero. So that if, for some reason we have any money left over, we're working off of the tax rule, we already know who owns the property at this time.
I think the only fair way to do it is not to levy it at all.
I agree.
I agree.
And then.
And may, make sure we explain to everybody why.
Yeah.
Well, if they come out with some ballot language about funding the police officers past the first of the year, I would like to go in the meeting and ask if we get road patrol here. Like instead of having to pay extra. You know what?
Yeah.
Why, why do we gotta pay extra? We already paid us a bulk county taxes. And you know why, why, why isn't an officer out here? There's two thousand people unless the census is coming.
So it depends upon the size of the police officer.
But you know, two thousand people out here, why isn't there, between us and Layman, why isn't there a car controlling out here on Reddick anyway?
And Bill City.
Yeah, yeah. And you could just, you'd think they'd have some type of quadrants or something to.
You know, based on our forecast, the taxable value, the six point six one mills that the county collects. Generates seven hundred thousand dollars just from the village of Lake Isabella.
Really?
That's how much a village residence pays.
And they don't haul roads, we don't get any share of patrol, what else don't they do? They don't do our taxes anymore.
That's it.
That's why, that's why it became the village.
Yeah.
Is because they weren't pulling the roads.
And that's true, that's, that's the impetus.
Yeah.
This was something actually I was gonna bring up in the committee thing, I, I forgot, too damn hot here. Um, this may be the, the opportunity that we need to look at city, but again, seriously, um. Changing from a village to a city. There is a logistical reason to look at doing it as well in that, um, because you are under two thousand. People right now, you can qualify as a fourth class city. If you're over two thousand, then you go back to the density requirement, which we're not gonna meet because of the lake, so you would. You essentially have to wait till twenty forty, I think, to meet the density based on current boroughs, if you wanted to go for a city. So you've got really between now and twenty thirty, if you wanted to look at this again and qualify based on our current census data.
So the.
What committee would that be? You would need a great one.
Would we get our own post office?
That we run ourselves, but yeah.
So I heard the post office might be looking to move, so.
All here, I got, I'll sell them some property.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna make some calls, all clearly can do on that for us, but.
Just, just so, uh, I don't have to hear that we're from Layman.
All right.
Never mind, we should nass that out.
So, that's the issue for us.
I think it's, sounds responsible, but not loving the knowledge.
Yeah. As long, and we have to make, make sure that we explain to folks in the village, this is what's happening.
Yep.
The reason it's happening and, and, and. Uh, the mess that they've made of Isabella County is why it's happening, it's not because of us.
Not gonna go out with this like that. And now it's like a little.
Yeah, if we do our own building.
Yeah, yeah, we can do our own, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
With the taxes, yeah. Okay. Cause I don't, I don't think I want to, uh, collect the money.
I think we should also post that.
Okay.
We have to have a motion.
Yes, we do, yeah. Well, we would say, let's see, election levy zero. Motion to levy, yeah. To, motion to levy zero for two thousand twenty-four. Twenty-five road patrol, right, cause it's. Yeah, there's a twenty-four tax, twenty-four. I'll make a motion, the levy zero for the road patrol village. Motion made by Latte too. Seconded by. So, the motion is to, to not levy the. What is it? One point, zero point, is it? Okay, two thousand twenty-four tax rule. Any further discussion? Same none, roll call please.
Joe Lattie?
Yes.
Robert Laraway?
Yes.
Brent Peavy?
Yes.
Carol Shannon, yes. Carrie Behringer, that's it. Paul Cuny?
Yes.
Abe Torgerson.
Yes. Look, we're giving you a tax break. Well, no, but this all started the genesis of this for you, you two folks, and we're in on the councils, so we struggled with trying to get. So that, uh, when we did the road patrol and stuff like that, it was just on, on, cause we got to use, uh, what's that money called? And then we passed the millage based on that, cause the folks said they wanted road patrol, they liked it. So, we have to make sure we get the message out that this is as a result of the pending.
Yeah, having nobody to.
Armageddon at Isabella County.
It's the county's problem, not ours.
I like that.
All right, so now we're down M dot project.
Okay, moving on here.
The deadline to submit a category B project for the upcoming year is four P M on June twelve, five P M on June twelve, five P M on June twelve. Um, we have not, um, started really getting around estimates on a project yet, um. I wanted to talk with the council about what your priority would like to be if we were to go after a grant project on this, um, and then obviously schedule a special meeting for the eleventh or twelfth to do so. Um, we could just dock off, you know, the next project and, and the CIP in terms of where we're going with major streets. Again, um, so our major streets are where we really have the bu- money to do stuff, we don't have local street money. That's a different issue that we're gonna talk about here in a little bit on the budget, um. The thought that I did have that I wanted to present to you and is actually in the CIP as the project to go after. Would be to do a fiber map, the project we did on El Camino Grande, which is that fiberglass. Uh, chip seal, then an overlay and do that for Queensway from Drew probably down to DeCuesa. Mainly to beef that road up another inch and a half for accommodating dredging traffic. Um, truck traffic that that project's going to entail, that road's gonna handle the bulk of that traffic coming in and out of that side of the lake. Um. Looking at the overlays that we've done since two thousand and nineteen. Um, you can see a clear difference in the reflective cracking on El Camino than you can, um, Queensway. Or Birdie because we did that, uh, interlayer, the Sammy, the stress absorbing membrane interlayer. Um, that has performed fantastically well, El Camino's in great shape. Um, it's not cheap, that was seventy-five thousand dollars to do that, and the rest of the overlay project was a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, the way I would look at it is a category B project, you can get half of the funding basically from the state. Um, that would roughly probably pay for the, the Sammy part of the project. Or we can do other projects.
So logistically, you're saying that's our most pain for our buck as far as what we're putting in, uh. Out of, of village funds?
I, I think it's the most appropriate way to curtail long-term expenses.
Yeah.
Um, the traffic volume that Queensway in particular, you're going to see. Assuming, you know, we do Riviera and we do, uh, you know, some of the other parks on that side of the lake. Through mechanical dredging, um, you know, that, that road sees fourteen hundred vehicles a day to begin with. Um. To me, it makes sense to, to really armor that road as much as possible in terms of what it can handle. Um, you know, we're gonna be left with, um, Wellhouse Drive from River to about South Park. Bundy from down at the end to basically in front of my house that hasn't been done. Olive and Nanza needs, um, needs it because that was done actually at the local street standard, then converted over to the major street. Um, but in that section of Queensway, north of El Camino is just chip sealed on top, um. And then from the Queen, uh, south, and then all of DeCuesa, and then Bundy, those are the ones that have been chipped last year, the Chipping Bog Project. Um. You know, those don't have a super high traffic volume, so we're, we're getting away with a lot more asphalt life there than we would. On Queensway, you know, like in front of my house, the average daily traffic count is like three hundred cars, you know, it's a fifth of what you got on Queensway.
Right.
Um, you know, and the truck traffic is out here on Queensway. You know, and if we can beat that road up, to me, I think that's, that's the most logical thing to do. With this project, if we can get the money to do it from the state.
Yeah, and it'd be, yeah. They'd have to take the spoils from this side and we have to take them to the.
Yeah.
They can, you can go right down Queensway, right down, they go down, go down baseline if they want to.
Yeah.
On the gravel road, save them.
Soon as the bridge is open.
No, we just, we, we still get around it, yeah.
Yeah, let's straight.
Just go straight.
Yeah. Say, if your schedule would allow for a special meeting on the eleventh or the twelfth.
Yep, um, I will not be here, so Bob, you'll be running that one, I'm out of town that whole week.
Even Monday the tenth, tenth, eleventh to twelfth.
What's your preference?
I am, we're playing commission Tuesday the eleventh that evening. I have to take a kid to volleyball camp from like ten thirty or nine forty-five to ten forty-five. And then pick her up from twelve fifteen to one fifteen.
All week?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Alrighty, cool.
The eleventh, I can do the nine forty-five, but that's a not.
That's the one I can, yeah.
Oh, see, I had to read it twice, I was just doing it.
We could do it at nine, that's totally doable, it's gonna be a short meeting. Do nine thirty.
My parents are.
And the kids, come on.
Barely open.
I prefer like eight A M or three or after, and I, I, I can make, I can make something else happen too. Then I just don't have a special trip out here and then head right back to them.
It's fine with me.
I'll find, I can do it. I don't want.
Which day? I wasn't paying attention, what?
Said I, I can do eight, I don't want to.
If you can't take it, Jeff will fill it. Early morning.
He does, I heard that already.
Eight A M on the eleven?
The eleven? Shocking, my phone doesn't take that time.
It's all eight hundred from military time. On the eleven.
That's on the eleven, that's a Tuesday.
Hello for resignation is.
It's really hard. I don't actually.
Really?
No.
Hey, protest. Just stay up all night, look that after.
I had a roommate in college that did that, she was asleep, right before she smoked the weed, so.
Yeah, but it usually involves drinking.
Okay, here we go.
Will we have air conditioning by that time, Tim?
Yes, thank you very much.
Probably not.
I don't. Introduction. Of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget capital improvement.
It is, what season in Lake Isabella? You have before you the working draft so far, I apologize if the budget mess itself, which are highlight areas because. A lot of this is, you know, contingent on data that we would typically get from the county in terms of some of these numbers, so. Uh, you have a proposed two-year budget in front of you, um, so. By law, you have to show the previous year, the current year, and the next year, we always have gone further in each direction. Uh, this year, what I did with the line items is gave you a five-year, um, average. Prior to the previous year, so you've got twenty-two, twenty-three, current year, the proposed and the projected twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, all told, the village is in fantastic financial shape and condition all around. Uh, right now, based on our most recent numbers, we're looking. Uh, right now, based on our most recent numbers, we're looking at. Uh, bringing, uh, six hundred fifty-six thousand roughly into the new year for our general fund balance. Four fifty-four in Major Street, one sixty-nine in local, about eighty-six hundred in sewer. And then we obviously have the road patrol and like improvement funds. The, uh, draft budget has revenue of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars in general fund. Expenses of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, sixty-six dollars. Five hundred twenty-nine thousand, one eighty-eight in Major Street, that is, um, the category B grade that we have, the one that we would be applying for. So that, you know, take that number and the expense number in grand salt, cause if you don't get a second grant. The expenses would come down, but that would be seven hundred and twelve thousand, one ninety-nine Major Street expenses, leaving a fund balance of two seventy-one, two fifteen. Major local streets, uh, one thirty-one in revenue, one fifty-five in expenditures. Uh, our sewer fund, you know, we pay for the Ecolite testing in the lake from that fund. Um, the sheriff fund, pretty much zeroing that out without collecting the millage. And then our first year for the lake restoration fund between, um, interest income and the millage. Um, projecting revenue of about two hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred eighty-nine. Uh, this year's expenses would be two hundred and eleven, five ninety-four roughly. That would be the Birch Bay project, some permitting, uh, testing, that kind of stuff. And then carrying that balance forward for the next year with that casher to go do the river project in fall twenty-five. Your capital improvement plan, um, nothing crazy going on here for the most part. Uh, we're going to do the other plow replacement this year. Uh, we did one this budget year. This is the second year to do the one. We have a few computers we're going to replace. We do have to do a non-motorized project for our act fifty-one funding. Uh, we were going to do it this year and just didn't get around to doing it, um, we're okay on that. Uh, you have the Clubhouse Drive project at two hundred and eighty-five thousand. The Queensway, one that we just discussed is a possible category B project, would be a quarter million dollar, um, earmark set aside for it. Um, we talked last year, budget time about this and I, we didn't have it set for this year, we had to set a couple of years out, but. Uh, we would really like to replace the new Holland tractor. Um, it's the smaller, it's the blue one. That's a fifteen horse, fifteen-ten model. We want to get something bigger, cab, um, heat, A C. And then get a bigger mower for the back end. Um, it is, it's too long to mow ditches right now, um. Looking at efficiencies. Um, this would be a much more efficient way to do this. We have twenty-six miles in streets, so. Essentially fifty-two and a half miles of ditches to mow. We obviously don't, cause people mow their grass, but. Um, it's a considerable amount of ditch work that we do. Um, that would include trading in the New Holland as well. We are in the second year of a two-year plan to upgrade some tools and chainsaws. The bulk of our tools that we had previously were, um, Craftsman battery system. So we moved last year to Milwaukee. Um, and we made a switch last year on a trial basis to an electric chainsaw. As opposed to the, the gas ones that we've been carrying for storm cleanup. And those things are fantastic. Um, they're so much safer for us to use.
Is it a Milwaukee or a Stude?
It's steel. It's steel. So right now we have two and we have five batteries, so we're going to get, pick up another couple of ones. Um. They are fantastic. They're so much safer to use when you're out doing storm cleaning because. The minute you are off the trigger, it is silent. So if you're in a situation where you've got tree limbs and stuff coming down. You can hear what's happening as opposed to the, the rumble of chainsaw. Um, probably one of the, the bigger items to talk about would be, um. I would like to bring on an additional part-time seasonal person. His only job is to mow here in D P W, a one-day-a-week type deal. There is enough right-of-way work for Jerry and another burden at this point in time that we. We can breathe this up to do that. I want to install a standby gas generator at D P W building, so maybe there's an electrical outage that would kick on. Uh, one thing, the, a couple of things actually you want to talk at finance committee about when we get to that point. Um. We explored this year switching our health insurance, um. I don't know. What's this term for it?
Fire.
And, and it's still Blue Cross Blue Shield, um.
The plans?
The plan holder, yeah, you know. And we had missed the deadline, uh, we thought our renewal was the end of a month, not the start of a month, um. But we're looking at switching to, um. Um, of West Michigan Pool, which is still Blue Cross Blue Shield. Probably this year, we're going to save, um, probably about six percent when we implement that. Um. One thing I did want to look at in that is potentially adding like an F S A option. Um. For staff in terms of covering out-of-pocket healthcare expenses. And then one thing additionally that, um, in terms of something that's not in here yet, but I wanted to see with your guys' stomach on it would be. Um, having a study done by Row for recommendations on local street project funding. The bulk of our local streets were done in two thousand and seven through a special assessment process. Um. You know, I would like to have them do a, a study for you guys to look at. These are the things that we can do and what it would cost in terms of. You know, if we do a. Chip seal, here's how long you're going to get out of it, you know, four to six years, here's what the cost is going to be on a scale of that size, um. Mainly, I just don't have the time to do it right now. Like, I, I could, but I have too much stuff going on. Other than that, that, this is not something I got time for, um. Past practice has always been to have some discussion tonight. Answering questions, ideas that you guys have, things that we, you know, haven't touched on. Prefer finance and then have the final document for you and a public hearing at the June meeting. Um, our debt schedule is in there. Uh, we only have one debt issue. We did a refi in twenty twenty-one. Uh, paid down some debt, recast, uh, a couple of issues into one. Um, so I think we have a beginning debt load of like two hundred and seventy thousand for the organization. And that was what it cost to build this by D P W and build the Solbar. The two different rounds of refinancing, we, all that debt is saved over a half million dollars in terms of, um. Interest that we would have paid on higher rates. Other than that, you've got staffing breakdown. In there. C I P.
Yeah. That's a nutshell. So the big ask is, one of the big asks is you want to hire a seasonal person for the mowing, cause that would free Jerry up.
Yeah.
Do other stuff. You figure one day a week could be.
Really? So you just do the buildings, yeah. That's all we're asking. Well, I thought you were going to have you somebody left.
Well, the tractor is probably a bigger ask than that is. You know. Just for clarification. Money-wise, but not, you know. He can only spread so thin, right?
I have an electric Milwaukee chainsaw, we're trying that out. You're buying Milwaukee tools, the batteries you're using, that's the only thing that'd be sweet about that.
Yeah, we already, we already got two steel. And five batteries from the steels.
Oh.
And we got a government rated, it does, I'm buying. Yeah, Milwaukee's are sweet, we, um. We picked up kind of a starter pack on Black Friday is the. The rollover on the, you don't buy tool, you buy a battery system, you know, and. You know, when.
Tool's cheap.
Yeah, tools cheap, you know, when Sears was in Mount Pleasant and, you know, it was locally owned. You know, it was a, it was a great option, but. You know, it's, um. But picking up the, the Milwaukee tools has definitely been an improvement, um. Just performance-wise all around with, um.
So the tractor is on, uh. Is it a year ahead of time?
Yeah. We purchased the new Holland in two thousand and seven. We didn't have.
Seems like yesterday.
We didn't have this building yet. We were building it.
I like the idea of the cabin.
Yeah.
And the heat, everything, and the safety, and it's bigger more.
Yeah.
Just I'm, I'm all for that.
Yeah.
As long as we have the money.
Yeah, I, I think we'll get a respectable trade-in on, on the tractor too, if we, we go that route with it. Um, it's only got twenty-three hundred hours on it, I think, um. You know, we. We have two mower attachments we use right now. We have a four-foot brush hog. And then we've got the, the boom mower. Um. You know, based on the size of the tractor, we can only go with something that's got a, a three-foot cut. You know, so that, as it's so inefficient, um. You know, we get a bigger tractor, that also gives us a little bit more flexibility in terms of storm cleanup perhaps. You know, with cab, um.
Future limitations as well.
Yeah, you know, those type of things. Brett and I have talked, you know, he's Bobcats, a certain option to go with. You don't want to go down that road, um. On the mower end, um, either picking up. You know, a, a late duty kind of zero churn, or we have a, a old rider that we used for years. The problem was that it kept throwing belts, cause the deck was too big for, so. Take that and put a, a smaller deck on it and, and not buy another mower to do the buildings, um, certainly a possibility.
What's the other one more we're going to do?
So we use the zero turn right now a lot on like pole disaction, shoulders and that kind of stuff. The other mower would be just for the building, so it wouldn't need to be the. Potentially big. That would also alleviate if. Gives more flexibility in terms of the, the one guy to mow, he's not just coming in on Fridays, cause Jerry works four times, you know.
Yeah.
Any other questions? We need to set up a meeting.
With finance committee. This time of year, yeah.
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 Just as needed though. Like if it dries up in July, you're not.
Yeah. I'm sure we could figure out some other landscaping stuff to do.
One of the other seven that I can do any day.
Another housekeeping item that's in there that I didn't really put in there is, we're going to have the painters come back and redo the, uh, fascia on the building. I don't know if you've noticed the front, but. The fascia is peeling, the rest of the building is fine, it's just the fascia all around, but that's in there to get done.
This is for the finance committee, period through the seventh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not on it.
Not yet.
It's Carol Bob and I, isn't it?
And what?
Yep.
Yeah, Bob, you gotta get your calendar on, dude.
You're on treasure, sir. You're on finance, dude. You're the ones that have to print all the back stuff.
Yeah.
Make sure you're charging now.
We didn't decide yet.
Decide yet.
Waiting for you.
I can't make it.
Third through the seventh. Any day you wanted to go.
That's a June, huh?
Of June.
Sure, two thousand seventh. I can do five, six, or seven.
Okay.
Not, not at eight A M, however.
Eight fifty, okay, eight fifty.
Eight fifty.
The six is out, we have training from the county for tax bills.
Oh, yeah, we're not going to that, right? Just you?
It must be the seventh.
Seventh is, I've got. Two meetings already on my schedule.
All right, maybe that day, so.
Unless we want first thing in the morning.
Nope.
Just Ron, the third and fourth, are you done?
No, well, maybe. Okay, doesn't.
The Tuesday?
Uh, fourth, I can do, be, I have to be in town by noon and then I'm back.
Well, then you can get up early.
Okay.
Fourth at what time?
Nine.
Ooh, did you say that?
I did, only because I was afraid you'd say eight.
I thought you might burst in flame when you said it.
Fine, are we doing nine?
Nine o'clock to four.
Alright, fine. Yeah, I didn't tell what it was though.
Well, they don't like getting on their committee.
Yeah, don't you wonder?
That was the day you weren't here.
Okay, not that.
All right. You've been in the list for a committee, which ones am I not?
Yeah, that's right. We're not having that meeting.
All right. So this is another chance for public comment.
I just wanted to comment on what you guys were talking about becoming a city. That it probably is a good time to get another committee together and take a serious look at pros and cons. Becoming a city could also give us the opportunity to read the boundaries of the village as well, and also look into the. Tax money that would come from Chairman of Roomfield Township, if you asked him to set it down.
Yep.
So I would, much of them trying to stay off of many different things that I can now, that is one I would definitely volunteer to. To help work on the city committee.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Any comments council-wise? Bob, you're on the finance committee. Glad to have you back, Paul. All right. That's it, announcements? Name none?